We are, it looks like we've got public hearing on Francis Frappi's. Graveyard.
Graveyard. This is an annual renewal of the automobile graveyard application, I mean that he operates up on.
It's just renewal.
It's just, yeah.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
I didn't take the motion, I guess.
Just moved to the second.
Second?
Moved to the second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, on paper. Thank you, fine. There's a piece of sign on this.
And the contract's in there.
Alright, we'll do that after. The next one is on annual assistance.
Yes, this is the annual MSA, not MSA, state maximums for GA levels that they pass out every late September. We're supposed to adopt them by October to put them in effect. There's a minor increase based on the, I believe it's on the Social Security Index, I'm not sure, I can check that out. But there was a minor increase of a few dollars on each one of these in the, but in Kennebec County is the one that we operate under, the maximums for one, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for an individual.
I couldn't find Kennebec County, could you please?
Kennebec County is on page two of the maximum sheets, page three.
Keep going.
And there should be a summary sheet in here too, but there's food maximums, housing maximums, all of that. These are, this is a pro forma, unless you have issues with it, it's every year.
No, okay.
We don't have any discussion on these, anybody doing it?
You can.
You can raise them.
Move to the second, if you'd say.
I move to accept.
Okay, so I have a second. And moved to the second, any discussion? Seeing none, on paper. Five, four, thanks.
I have just a curious question, Mr. Kettle.
Yes.
How do you see it increased? Who increases them? Is that a legislative?
It's the state, DHHS, state program, they operate under, there's an operating law, and on an annual basis they review, they, and I think it's the Social Security Index increase or maybe something else, but I don't know. It may be the Consumer Price Index for urban or rural areas.
But it's not something that the legislature votes on?
The legislature passed the law initially to allow for it, but then DHHS operates under the rules that they promulgated and all that.
So that's, that's all we have on the public hearing.
That's all we have on the public hearings.
I didn't take a motion to modify. Can you move, you have a second?
Yes.
Move to the second, on paper. Now I didn't take a motion to go into our regular select board meeting.
Yeah, you go.
I didn't motion.
No second.
Then move to the second, on paper. Alright, we do not have any old business, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
So the first thing on the new business is the bingo, am I correct? I don't have it.
You mean you don't have the chapter?
Nah, I don't see it.
It's right there where you write Kettle's. It is the bingo.
Sorry about that? Okay, yep. So I guess what you're looking for is you need to have bingo at Belgrade Central School.
Right, and this is one of those that is not delegated, each of the municipal official officers are supposed to sign on the back of this.
This is, there are actually two of them, is that right?
There are two of them, they're both on the same date?
Probably, did the groups get together or nothing like that?
I believe it is.
Because one is Belgrade Central, the other one is the Rotary Club?
Yeah, but I think they do it the same night and they cooperate. It's like the.
Because they, well they, I don't know about this, but the law was changed back in 2012 to allow for two groups to kind of work together.
The friends in the library. You want to do them both at once or individually?
This is no, we've never done the Rotary Club.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know, I, you haven't done it.
I asked questions, I think it was Fran last time.
They both have the same charter.
I think we can do them both together because it's the same.
I move approval of both of them.
You have a second?
Second.
Can you move to the second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, on paper. Five, thank you. Uh, next thing is MMA voting delegate.
Yes, the MMA meeting's coming up in October, I know that Kathy's gone, I don't know who else is going, I'll be going. This is a request to identify those who are going to be voting and alternate voting members when you go to the business meeting. So the business meeting's in the morning, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and then that's where they'll have various issues that you will hear about, and then you can vote on them. Normally, either, generally, you would appoint a town officer, that would be a select board member, to be the voting official, but you can have the alternate as the town manager, or you can just have the town manager vote. So that's that. So I'm just looking for who you might, last year, I believe, it was Mike in May, Mike was going to the, to the convention and to the business meeting, but that's up to you to decide whether you want.
I don't think Mike's going this year.
Is anybody, am I the only one going?
I'll be going.
I mean, you're not.
One of your staff will be going here.
Do I move that Kathy be the delegate?
No, I don't think so.
Well, you're gonna be the only one there besides us.
Yes, I'm gonna be there. I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, we'll sit together.
You'll find out.
I'll have to tell her. That's how I find out what I'm doing, right?
It's just you'll listen to the business meeting, generally it's pretty much straightforward, it's not a lot of hard discussion.
I'm not here to convince the bad folks that I'm gonna go and I'm gonna vote for John Wilcox, I don't know who.
You exude a level of confidence.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so Kathy, you're gonna be the delegate?
Yes, if Danny sits next to me.
I will. So I'll, I'll put those in, and do we have the original? Okay, it'll be there for you to sign.
How's it pros now?
Yeah, how you doing? Good, you saw it.
Alright, so, I guess I need a motion to accept those two.
I move to nominate.
Okay? Then move to the second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, on paper. Alright, okay. Me and I go on to a abatement.
These are the typical abatements from the assessor's office, from the assessor.
What are you missing?
I'm frustrated.
I'm frustrated. I've asked for agendas to be sent out, I now know that it started at six o'clock.
It's not six thirty?
No, the meeting will follow immediately after the board meeting. We, we looked into your email thing, and we saw a couple that had been delivered to another server, that we, we received the receipt that you got it.
Well, I got another message this afternoon saying you're having problems, but you didn't even include the agenda with that message.
I sent it right after when you responded to me and said you got it. I sent it right to you, right after that.
When you, yeah. But we are having problems with the email servers, this, starting when we were, I don't know, but this earlier, so, not the email, but the internet.
Are we all set, move on?
Sorry, dude.
No, that's fine. Well, they're working on it, try to get it better. Alright, I guess the first one is the CIT Financial, am I correct?
CIT Financial, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, and a thirty-five dollars and four cents. You have a second?
Second.
Can you move to the second, on paper? Thank you. Second one is, is Pam Wilcox, and this is, looks like it was a mistake.
Correction, the building, yeah?
Correction, for the building of Southwest School. They lowered the track.
And that one's for the difference of a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Can you move, we have a second?
Second.
I forgot to ask a lot, any discussion on this?
No.
Seeing none, all in paper. Thank you. Did you move that something?
No, I'm fixing my glasses.
Okay. I'm glad of that, because I almost missed it. Uh, next one is Robert Rowe. And he looks like, what's the problem with that?
Correct building assessment, the same as the previous.
Neighbor one.
Five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Do I have a motion on that?
Well, I just have, I do have a question on it, because of where, where abating is at five forty-eight ninety-six.
Let me put it on the floor and then, then move to the second, okay?
Second, any questions?
Hi, good. Mr. Murphy's.
Move to the second, now, discussion.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, so we have an abatement of five forty-eight ninety-six for the, so then we should have a supplemental on the other side, so the correct law, and we have four seventy-four fifty.
But that's for another law, isn't it? That's for town.
So she's saying is that?
That's a different, this is the two, this one one's on the neighboring lot, sec- four, see corresponding supplemental tax assessment. Supplemental tax assessment is the Tyler Easter, uh, Eastler lot, so that is your supplemental tax assessment. I think he assessed the trailer to the wrong lot.
Which is?
Okay, so he reduced the amount of the, the.
On the row property?
On the row property, added, added the correct amount to the.
Easter problem.
Easter problem.
Well, it says the mobile home is on neighboring lot four, so if we're abating five forty-eight ninety-six from this one, because it's not their mobile home, then there should be a supplemental tax on lot number four, in the, in the same amount.
You know, he should be here, we, we might do that for all.
Well, and that's what we were, we were talking about that the other night, that the, it used to be that, that the tax assessor was here, and it could fully explain, but if we're, if we're taking it off from one and we're putting it on another one, then there should be a wash. So we have two different amounts, so we have five forty-eight ninety-six that we're abating, but we're only getting back four seventy-four fifty. So, we're missing.
Well, perhaps we can't do anything to get more information, but it's possible that the other lot was already taxed.
I, I think that that's what.
So there's a taxation situation here.
Do you see some kind of classification on that?
Well, seventy-four forty-six is, is not there, so when it, if it's just, if it's just the trailer, it should be a wash between the two, we should be abating one and supplementing the other one, and they should come out either.
Unless there's another issue up there, but I'll check that out.
So do you want to table this until you get more information?
Yeah.
I would.
Alright, so we've got to withdraw a motion to table.
Withdraw a motion.
Okay, now I need a motion to table this.
I'll make that motion.
So it'll be, has it moved to the second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, on paper. Thank you, fine. Alright, the Tyler Eastler, we're gonna leave that one too.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, so we'll sign a couple of these, but not all of them. Alright.
So Rowan Easton gets tabled until?
Yep, Tyler, Rowan, uh, Rowan, Row Eastler, table.
Until we get more information?
That's it.
Is the assessor going to come and explain to us?
If you want him here, I'll have him here.
Well, I think we should request it, that used to be the standard policy.
Yeah, it did.
That, you know, so then if we had any questions, he could answer the questions, or she could answer the questions, or it happens to be our assessor.
So whenever there's any assessments, you want the assessor here?
Well, if there's an abatement that they've authorized, or, you know, if there's been a revow.
I meant my abatement's.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we gonna do the add-on right now, the, I don't have it.
We have one more tax abatement.
We do?
We do.
Eastler.
No, we don't.
No, Eastler is the supplemental.
No, we table both of them.
Okay, wait, did I just not miss Pamela Wilcox?
We got.
Wilcox, this is the supplemental for the mobile.
That's the supplemental. Nope, then I have Wilcox, and I'll turn a Jane Sawyer on the Staubing Point load.
We already did Wilcox. Second one we did.
Oh, I think I just flipped it up on my finger, didn't get that up, okay, no.
Probably not Wilcox. I think we're gonna do this add-on.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
It isn't six thirty yet, and I think people might have been under the impression the meeting starts at six thirty, even though, because this said two different things, one, the meeting was at six thirty, and then it's immediately after the public hearing. So I think that add-on, which is why we're here, and I know some other people that are planning to come, perhaps should be.
You want to wait a few minutes? We can do that.
Five minutes, obviously, there.
We can do some of the other stuff that we got the warrant to do, we'll do that. Tell me to report, and we'll come back.
There's two, and then there's maybe a third if you guys agree to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start with warrant number one hundred and twelve, the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Do I have a second on it?
Second.
Okay, can you move to the second, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is Guido's Place?
Guido's Place is a road sign.
It's a road sign. And where's that road sign?
I have more.
Off the west road, I think.
Because I was under the impression that when we were labeling the roads, that they had to have, that it couldn't be labeled like this, like we had some that it did like their daughter's name and lane, or whatever, but it couldn't be like Guido's Place.
But, um, my understanding is that Gary Fuller was the E nine-one-one addressing officer, what proves it?
Well, then we should be following the same protocol that we had to follow when we had to re-label all of the.
I, I don't know what that protocol was.
I think one of the most, who was the original?
Yeah, he was the original one, but I, I think that's been turned over to Gary, because he's the E nine-one-one addressing.
Well, it could be, place could be, it could be a description of a road. Second, second place.
Whether or not that was even, that may have, I don't even know.
Is it a road replacement?
Was it in existence, Mike, do you know if that road was in exist, I didn't even think about it.
I just think.
It may have been one that was in existence. I don't know, Mike, Mr. Rogers.
It's not one I've ever seen, but I remember when we were relabeling the roads.
Well, I'll tell you what, we have to put a sign, and if it's a problem, what I'll do is talk to Gary, we'll, we'll straighten it out, but we, the sign has been paid for it.
Yeah, because I remember we had a public hearing about the nine-one-one signs, we were at Sunacross Seasons, it was my very first meeting on the board, and there was a discussion about the way some points wanted to label it on the road, and some points wanted to label it something different, and we had to come to an agreement as to which one followed the, the guidelines, and this to me doesn't look like, if, if I come down and went and say, where's your address, Guido's Place?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
I would think like, you know.
Because I don't know what the protocol is, because I've never seen.
Like Guido Lane?
Yeah, the reason was just Guido's Place, not Guido's.
Right, or Guido Lane, or if that's the last name, and it's long enough that it needs a nine-one-one, needs a sign.
I'll, I'll talk to Gary, but the, the sign is either up or it's going up, but I, it may have been already in existence, I don't know. I never even.
Mary, you know all this stuff, have you, you know of a place in Belgrade that's called Guido's Place, that has a road sign?
Guido's Place?
Guido's Place.
Oh, Guido's? Yeah, that's.
Is that DePietro? DePietro, bro.
Has that been, has that been there for a while?
It's in Guido, I know.
Yeah, has that been there for a while?
Has his sign been there for a while?
Yeah.
I do not know. I'd go back and look at the E nine-one-one.
That's what we're just saying.
Guido.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else, any questions?
Yeah. I thought the states have the speed limits on the roads, either so, why are we buying a speed limit sign?
Well, it's a, it's a local road, and I believe we asked for the change on the west road, that's the sign for the west road, the thirty-five mile right up from, from Sunset Grill, and so we, we asked for the question change on that, and I think, I don't know when, but I, I believe that that was the case, and that's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. We can request through traffic studies and stuff like that, and we've done it on several bases.
There's already a thirty-five mile an hour sign there.
He put it up, there wasn't one there, there's one further up the road, but this is one at the beginning. Problem is, we're getting a lot of people going right through that area, I've gotten lots of complaints this year, so, there used to be a sign there, as I understand, the sign, whatever happened to it, happened to it. So I asked Morris, is, did there used to be a sign, and if so, could you put another one there? He said, yeah, but I don't have any, I have to order one, because he had other speed limit signs, like forty-five mile an hour, twenty-five mile, but he didn't have the thirty-five mile an hour.
So we're still waiting for that time?
I believe he's, it's, I don't know, I don't know which one you're talking about, Mike, there's one up that says forty-five, and if there's one there now, it's the one that he put up.
Okay.
Because he was supposed to put it up last, but as soon as it came in, because we were getting that issue.
Yes.
You, you and I talked, I think, had a conversation about it.
Yes, you and I talked about it, and I do think it is up now.
Yeah.
I thought it had it.
Dave, do you have anything else, Mike? Anybody else got anything?
I, I have a curious question about the CMP, that's.
Curious?
Seventeen, seven, seventy-one. Uh, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, is that based upon that list you gave me of the streetlight thing? That list that I went through?
This is the streetlight, the, no, well, the calculations that they use should be based on that list, whether they add up to the same as this or not, I don't know.
Yes.
But there's a streetlight rate that we use, and it depends on the number of hours it's on and all that, but we get paid, we get charged for it.
Because, well, as you know, that, that streetlight list is not correct.
Well, we're, we're trying to correct that. That's the list we got from CMP.
I understand that, so I'm just, okay, that's all I mentioned, thank you.
Yes, but if it's not lit, we shouldn't be paying for it.
Well, yeah, some of them.
There's one that's not lit, but we asked for it not to be lit. Because I understand, talking to the people.
There are also some that are not there.
People, well.
That are on that list that we could.
Well, we, we may not be able to locate them, but they may be somewhere. I know Jack has gone around and looked at, and he's pretty much said that tonight, he's, he said that he thinks he's got most of them, he doesn't.
I think that's for another discussion, we'll need to get back to one.
Alright, fine, I do.
Is anybody else, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Actually, one, hold on, only, I'm looking at the warrant, there are two here, Central Main Fire Attack, that is crossed out on here, looks like it's voided, and then there's a secondary one a little further down, J.B. Simons, is the total on here reflective of those two that have been taken out?
I'm sure it does.
Well, these, these have not been changed here.
Yeah, well, if, if she crossed those out, I didn't ask her those questions, but if she crossed those out, I'm sure that, whatever totals reflected down here, what she may have was in a different, there may have been two, the two.
Is this one of the supplemental ones? I just want to make sure that we're not gonna then come back and be correcting this, because we're three hundred dollars there, and two pages down, there's a second one that's also crossed out, but I don't see in the totals here that there's a change.
I can't assure you.
So on the actual warrant, um, let me just double check against my warrant here on the book.
You're in the sixteen dollars, five thirty-four cents, thirty-two.
I do. Now, Central Main Fire Attack is still in here, so, what are our additional warrants? I just want to see if there's, and the second one, so Central Main Fire Attack is not in this, this warrant here, and the second one that is voided is J.B. Simons for sixty-three dollars from Belgrade.
I don't see.
Central Main Fire.
I don't see it.
It's a hundred dollars.
Right, but it's not in this warrant, but the total on, on the.
What warrant is this?
This is warrant one.
It's right here.
It's, it's there, Mike, but it's not on.
This is the warrant.
It's not on the actual copy of the sign, it's been voided out of it.
Gotcha.
So there's a difference of three hundred and sixty-three dollars, one is three hundred, the other one is sixty-three.
That's what we catch, I didn't.
But these are, these numbers totals aren't changed. So.
I didn't think that.
So the new total would be three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents.
So do we want to change the add, or do we?
Well, I don't know, I, I don't know why she voided those out, I wish I could answer that question for you guys, I can't.
So, I would like to make a motion that we approve the warrant in the amount of three hundred and sixteen dollars, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents, uh, three hundred and sixteen thousand, one seventy-one and twenty cents.
Taking the three hundred dollars out.
What's up?
Taking the three hundred dollars out.
That's taking the three hundred and sixty-three out. If the three hundred and sixty-three needs to be paid at another time, then I would request that there be an additional warrant created, that the town, the select board can come in and sign, and then come home out after the fact.
Okay, that's probably good.
Second, then.
Okay, then move to the second. Is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none, I didn't have a vote, all in favor? Five, thank you. So now we got another one, is that correct?
Oh, it's just the three that's due, alright.
Three checks.
It's just the one I have.
Wait a minute, Danny just has the same total.
Is that my wrong one?
I think that's your loose.
That's my loose one.
Yeah, I'm like, wait a minute.
Okay. This is for the US Postal, uh, cross, for the newsletter that went out, we weren't able to print a warrant for you to come in and sign.
Okay, so warrant number one, one hundred and six, so what, we have a hundred and six, and then we have a hundred and twelve, or one hundred?
Yeah, this was last week when we couldn't print it. If I can go back and explain the situation, there's a problem with Trio, Trio wasn't allowing us to print warrants when we wanted, they finally fixed that problem, that warrant finally came out in the printer, so to speak, if you know what I mean. So there was a back, there was a back, uh, programming issue that they had to repair to allow us to print warrants.
Okay, so.
We could print, print checks, but we couldn't print the warrant.
So warrants number one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, one ten, and one eleven, oh, we have.
Probably over here to sign, right? I don't want to sort of sign.
Only have, but she gave me, I gave them two, they're right there.
Oh, I know what they were, they were payrolls and stuff, I, that I could sign off, that's right.
Okay, so those warrants are below a payroll.
How much is that?
Uh, warrant number one oh six, the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll move to. Yes, you have a second. Can you move to the second, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Now, I know that you don't like to receive last minute warrants, alright, but there's a gentleman that did the work here, and he was wondering when he could get paid, and it's, uh, for a sum of five, three thou, uh, five, fifty-three hundred for the work he's done, and if you're willing to sign off on this warrant, uh, then he can get paid. And if you're willing to sign off on this warrant, then he can get paid. If not, we'll hold it on until the next meeting.
What do you guys want to do? What work did he do?
He did the work out here where we're going to put the doors. He's a small contractor, so you know.
Move to second here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
So, now there's warrants.
Warrant number one hundred and fifteen, and the warrant total is five thousand, three hundred dollars.
I hear second.
Second? Is that the one we just voted on?
Yes.
We just voted to pay him, but we won't do the...
Now, you got to vote on the warrant.
Okay, then we'll move to second here. Any discussion on it?
Five thousand, three hundred dollars.
Okay, it's all in favor? Thank you.
It's got to be signed.
Do you want to wait any longer, or do you want to... I mean, we can do the town manager thing too.
No, it's true.
All right. We did get a, we got a letter from Mr. Hazard. Just to set things straight, this wasn't part of our agenda tonight. I'd already approved the agenda for tonight, just came in after. So, if you guys want to even deal with this, I want to board from the board here now. If not, we're not going to deal with it.
I think we should deal with it.
What's your pleasure? You guys want to, or not?
Because I think...
By deal with it, you mean you have a discussion?
Yes.
I don't mind having a discussion.
Well, there's some questions I think we need to answer, but...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, we need some questions we need to answer, sorry.
But I don't think we can necessarily answer them tonight.
I think we've got, the questions are here, you all got, this is the questions that he was asking, and I think we've got answers to them. I guess the thing I want to make sure, you guys want to deal with it because it wasn't out of our intended time?
Let's deal with it.
Okay. Everybody in favor there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion? I make a motion that we allow something that came in outside of the program for the select board to be addressed this evening.
Dave, do you have a second on that?
Yeah.
Then moved to second here. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Do we want to read them as a matter of public record?
Well, it's in the public record.
Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead. Want to read it, go ahead.
All right, so this is a memory inundated September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to the Belgrade Board of Select Parsons, from Bruce Hazard, Belgrade taxpayer. Two thousand and eighteen Belgrade property taxes, nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-two cents, regarding town government and partisan politics. Last week, I went to the town office for two purposes, to pay my two thousand and eighteen property taxes and to turn in a political sign that had been placed on my lawn without my consent. I did not want the sign on my lawn because it promoted the candidacy of Dennis Keschel for a seat in the main house of representatives. Mr. Keschel is running as a Republican, I am a registered Democrat. Small print on the sign noted that the sign had been paid for by Mr. Keschel. As I was handing over my property tax check, it occurred to me that some of this money would be going to Mr. Keschel, who might then use it to pay for more signs exactly like the one I was turning in. Ouch. Indirectly at least, my property taxes would be supporting his campaign. Truthfully, I don't mind paying property taxes, have never tried to dodge them through one loophole or another. I have paid the loophole for over forty years, happy to support the town's efforts to provide good roads and educate our children. That said, I am not happy that my property taxes are now subsidizing a partisan political campaign, no matter what political party. I, for one, do not believe that our town manager should be running for political office while continuing to serve as town manager. As far as I am concerned, partisan politics should not have any place in town government, especially in this age of political divisiveness and rancor at state and national levels. At the town level, we should not be, for example, checking party affiliation when deciding on a building permit or hiring a contractor. People running to serve on your board should not have to have an IRB decide their names on the ballot. In my view, Mr. Keschel has crossed this town partisan politics line, and I think that it is regrettable. I am reminded that we, the citizens of Belgrade, gave Mr. Keschel a substantial raise at our last town meeting, bringing his annual salary to something very close to one hundred thousand dollars per year. Your board recommended the raise, the citizens approved it. I bet we were all thinking that he would be working very hard to earn that salary, devoting all of his time, energy, and attention to Belgrade's town affairs, making town systems work better, hiring and training employees, looking for outside resources to help lower our property tax taxes, et cetera. Then sometime after town meeting, not sure exactly when, Mr. Keschel decided to take on a whole additional personal work agenda, running for a seat in the state legislature. At this point, despite the fact that the citizens of Belgrade continue to pay his, to my mind, generous salary, he is no doubt also working hard in five other districts, seventy-six towns, knocking on doors, shaking hands, putting up signs, et cetera. What does this mean in terms of his work commitment to our town? What exactly are we paying him to do? Note, I have nothing against the good people of Mount Vernon, Bianna, Rome, Fayet, and Wayne. It shows that we Belgraders are the ones who are paying the bills. If Mr. Keschel is now working only part-time for the town of Belgrade, e.g., no longer devoting his full-time energy and attention to Belgrade town affairs, should your board revisit the compensation question? As a taxpayer, I believe you should. He is running, we are paying. I note that if Mr. Keschel had taken the normal path to getting on the ballot, declaring his candidacy, filing papers, getting signatures, et cetera, signatures had to be in by March fifteenth, town meeting was March seventeenth. We could have had a more robust discussion regarding his town manager's salary before we were asked to vote on that town meeting. But Mr. Keschel took a different path, I'm still not sure how he got on the ballot, what happened to Mr. Hilliard. Of course, the problem only gets worse if Mr. Keschel is actually elected. The demands on his time, energy, attention would then become much more significant than those currently associated with his simply running for office. Would we still be paying him his full Belgrade town manager salary? What to do? My sense is that we should move forward, leave the tag based on a better understanding of the situation. To help clarify and as a basis for future action, I submit these questions. Did Mr. Keschel represent to your board that he would devote his full-time energy and attention to the town manager job should he be hired? And/or did you assume that he would do so when you suggested that he be paid nearly a hundred thousand dollars per year for his work as town manager? Do you think that Mr. Keschel should continue to be fully compensated for the town manager job, nearly one hundred thousand dollars per year, now that he has decided not to devote his full-time energy and attention to Belgrade town affairs, choosing instead to run for political office? Should Mr. Keschel be allowed to use town facilities, as paid for by the citizens of Belgrade, for his own partisan political purposes, meetings, communications, et cetera? Do you think Mr. Keschel should continue to be employed as town manager should he be elected to the legislature? If not, what action would you recommend, and when would it take effect? If he is elected to the legislature and you want to keep him on as town manager, in other words, if you were to approve of his holding two jobs at the same time, what adjustment to his town manager compensation do you think would be appropriate? Again, in view of the fact that Mr. Keschel's availability and capacity to perform the duties of town manager seem to have been reduced significantly since our town meeting by his own choice, I think your board owes the citizens of Belgrade some straight answers to these questions. And this before the coming November election. We do not want to make yet another decision based on too little information. I hereby request that you place these questions on the agenda for your next board meeting, and that the results of your discussion be broadly communicated to citizens of Belgrade, again, before the November election. Thank you for your consideration of the ongoing service to the town. Respectfully, Bruce Hazard, three ninety-seven Dunn Road, Belgrade, Maine, zero four nine one seven.
You want to jump in?
Well, yeah, I think I would like to jump in, because I think there's a lot of misinformation conveyed in that letter. One, I wish I made a hundred thousand a year. I don't. In fact, when I was selected for the position and I was asked what I wanted to be paid, I asked the board to decide for themselves, because I wasn't taking the job on for money. And some of you board members were on that board. But I had, when you, so you decided my pay, I didn't. I also deferred and said I do not want health care, and I don't want the stipend that goes along if you already have health care, because I didn't want to charge anything more to the town. It's the same thing I did when I ran the last time, when I accepted the lowest level pay for town manager, when I first came on as town manager. I was not trying to make money off the town. As to me spending money on signs, I put three hundred dollars into a campaign fund. It's Dennis Keschel doing business in this house, District Number Seventy-Six. It's what I'm required to do. And then I asked my friends and neighbors and relatives to help support my campaign. That's where I'm getting the primary amount of money that is running the campaign. I'm glad that I have friends and neighbors who are willing to do that. As to the issue of spending my own money, when I work for the town, like I work for any other, if I were to work for a company or whatever, I earn that money. I suppose someone could question whatever money I make, maybe I shouldn't buy alcohol. I don't know, some people might not like their taxes, might buy alcohol. There are several people and politicians running for state positions right now who are in taxpayer-funded positions, who are campaigning on taxpayer time. I do not campaign on taxpayer time, I have not, never, used any town equipment for campaign activities, and I've never brought partisan politics into this position, never. I agree with Bruce, partisan politics, they're not a part of town government. Everyone on that board that you're sitting on, in my position, in my office, I said, you work for the town of Belgrade. Everything we do is supposed to better citizens in the town of Belgrade. For someone to assume that because I'm running for office, I'm using the equipment? Well, that's our assumption, I can't stop that. But I don't use your equipment. In fact, my phone, I carry two phones. One I don't use unless it's, someone calls me on it and sends an email. All of my email, all of my telephone calls are transferred to my personal phone that I pay for. I would like to get rid of this phone, all right? So, I pay for my own phone. I get paid sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Part of that was the initial agreement that you guys said, well, we'll pay you sixty thousand a year. Six months into it, we'll review your work, and we'll up it to five thousand if necessary. And then, and then when I was asked at my annual review, what I wanted, I said, I don't want to take any more than what you have given town staff, that's two and a half percent raise, because I don't think it's appropriate. And I didn't. I get paid a hundred and fifty dollars for mileage. I have a year and a half of my car, it's a year and a half old, I got fifty-three thousand miles on it. Now, I'm not saying all those miles per town miles, but many of them were. The only other thing that I take, other than my pay from the town, is there's a retirement account. The town will match up to three percent of my retirement, my pay, my base pay, for what I put into retirement. So, they match that, so that it's equivalent to eighteen hundred dollars a year. I believe the hundred thousand dollars that Mr. Hazard is talking about has to do with all of the things that are supposed to be paid for. We put in the budget, health care, we put in the budget, all kinds of things that normal town managers who don't have health care and all of that need, if you were to hire them. If I were to drop dead, you'd have to hire someone, you need money there to pay for those things. That's why the account looks like it's near a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's that. I have not been out campaigning, but once. I did that Saturday for three hours. Well, how did the signs get up? I have friends and neighbors who put those signs up for me, I appreciate that. I believe I'm disappointing many of my constituents in the House District Seventy-Six, because I haven't been able to be able to visit them, because I've been working on issues for the town. Now, if people don't believe, you know my work schedule. You know the work I do, and you know the issues I'm working on. Everything from senior care to water quality, to improve road systems management, to, you name it. I mean, I've got a number of programs started. We're working now on Conferensive Plan. I'm doing all kinds of stuff that I want to move along. So, I'm working beyond the hours, I think, that you would require. In fact, some of you people during the evaluation said, geez, shouldn't be working that. So, I find it hard to understand why someone who doesn't really understand or know, like me as a person, is saying that I've gone to part-time, because if anything, I've worked harder this summer than I, than I have at any time. How did I get into the position? Well, before I took the role of town manager, even thought about it, I talked to Gary Hilliard, and I said, "Gary, are you going to run, Representative Hillary?" He said, "Yes, I'm going to run." I said, "Good." And so, I was looking for work when the job came along. I took the job with no expectation of running. This spring, after the town meeting, Gary Hilliard said, "Danny, for personal reasons, I'm not running. Would you be interested in running?", because a lot of times it's hard for parties to find candidates. I said, "Well, let me first, before I say I will", because I made a commitment to the town for three to five years if they approved of my work. So, I came back to the board, and I asked the board, I said, "Look, I committed to the town three to five years." I said, "I want to honor that commitment." I said, "But there's an opportunity for me to run for the legislature. There are things that I would like to see done for our district. I believe I can do both jobs, because people, there are people who are serving in the legislature now, and who have served in legislature in the past, and there are public officials, as well as officers, who are serving in the legislature." And I said, "I think I can handle the job, but if you don't believe so after the first few months, then we'll sit down and talk, and we'll figure out what we can do." I even said, I believe, if you can correct me, that if it comes to a situation where we need to pay someone in the office at a higher level, because they're doing higher-level duties, because I can't be here, you can take it out of my salary. Or, I've even commented to some people, I'd be willing to give up my legislative pay when I was working. Penny, I said that to you. You remember that, I came in.
You know my memory.
So, so that's where the whole issue is at.
Did you say your legislative pay or your town pay?
My legislative pay, I would relinquish my advice. Thank you. So, how did I get into this position? After Gary told me he was not going to run, I talked to the board. They said, "Geez, no, we'd like to take on the opportunity, and if it doesn't work out, we'll work something out." Right? I believe that's what you guys, generally, I mean, it's not the exact wording, it was a fairly long discussion. So, I moved forward with that. And the only real work I've done on my campaign is setting up the signs and the handouts and stuff like that. But how did I get to be a candidate? Well, when Gary was through, the law requires, allows for the Republican Party in those, in that district, to get together and choose a candidate. So, we had a caucus, a meeting of the Republican Party in the town of Belgrade. And the caucus chose me as a candidate. And after the board had already agreed that they thought it would be okay, I agreed to serve as that candidate and to run in that position. So, that's how I got here as a candidate. Would I have preferred to go out and canvass and talk to my constituents throughout the primary? Yes, because constituents need it and deserve to talk to their candidate. But I wasn't able to, because it didn't happen during the primary season. So, I'm, I think that I'm doing a good job for the town, I'd like to think that. There are some people who think I'm... They have, everyone has their thoughts, right? It's a difficult position. But I'm working hard for the town, I continue, I believe I'll continue to work hard for the town. I don't have any problems with that. And I think that I'll put a full-time town manager job in and be able to work for the legislature. I believe that, and I'm committed to doing that. It takes weekends, I work on weekends now, so it's not a problem. If you see a loss in activity for me as a town manager, it's because it's those hours that I'm working that I'm now, beyond where you would normally expect someone to work, that I would be committing to the legislature. So, I think that that's possible. So, finally, I just want to let you know that before I did any of this, I contacted the Ethics Commission. And I talked to the Ethics Commission about, was there anything wrong? Is there, what should I do, and all of that? And I told them what I was going to do, and I have a letter from the Ethics Commission that, or an email to the Ethics Commission that says, "No, this is not a conflicted position. There are more than, there are other people that have done it, and you're following everything. In fact, you know, there's, what you described is well above what you would necessarily need to do, that you're doing." So, I'm trying to be ethical, I'm trying to become mindful of the public downline. And I'm trying to represent the public, and I'm trying to do... My entire life is about public service, for the last forty-some years. And that's where I'm going to end my life, is in public service, I hope. I don't have any plans to retire, so unless the good people of the district choose to vote me out, that's understandable. But my whole life has been devoted to public service, and that's why I'm committed to the job of town manager. And I'm committed to the people of District Seventy-Six, should I be fortunate enough to get elected. And I hope that people in District Seventy-Six understand, perhaps, the reasons why I'm not getting out as much as I would like to. And once this accelerated budget process is over, that we're under, maybe I'll be able to get a little bit more campaigning in before November. Nonetheless, I hopefully responded to the issues raised. I understand there might be a misunderstanding on the part of Mr. Hazard in terms of looking at the budget and not understanding that the hundred thousand dollars or near a hundred thousand dollars... thousand dollars, uh, didn't, uh, isn't a real dollar value that I'm working under. And I'd like to think that the town didn't vote me a forty thousand or fifty thousand dollars raise, because that's not what happened. I essentially got the two and a half percent raise that you allocated for the other town, uh, town staff. So I can answer other questions from you if you have it. If you have any concerns, let me know. I can make decisions that would resolve any concerns that you may have. But I do, uh, love Belgrade, I love the district, I've served for it before and I want to continue serving both, I think I can. Other town managers have proven that they can and they're currently serving in their position. And as one gentleman told me today, lots of towns, this is what he said, uh, like the idea that their town manager is also in the legislature now. That doesn't mean this town has to, it just means, that's a commodity. So, so I, you know-
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
I just, I just wanted to tell you, we, we did, I should've told you this at the beginning, this afternoon, we got a email from Mr. Hazard, couldn't make it tonight. And that kind of is why I asked a question, the board wanted to go on with this. I think the person that brings something like this to us ought to be here to represent it. But I should've told you then at the beginning, again.
Come on, I have to say, there's this part of me that's curious, how all these other people knew that this was gonna be here tonight if this just came in. We didn't, I didn't know about this.
This was sent out in the agenda to everyone who's on the agenda list.
Okay.
That's why people are here, I guess.
Yeah. We got this-
We didn't, I didn't, I didn't, no, no, do anything but, so I haven't put it on the agenda.
No, 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 I wasn't assuming that you had. I was assuming that there was like some phone call thing, like, hey, you know?
Even if so was, so was, that's my, but, no.
It, it is your right, absolutely, but, um, if, if it didn't go out in an honest way, then my next recommendation would be if it came in after the time that we closed the agenda, then it wouldn't be addressed at the next board today.
Can I, can I respond? Just to answer your question, I, I, I'm sorry, but, um, in, after the agenda deadline, the board has authorized me to put things on the agenda if I consider them to be an emergency. Given the request in the original email to me by Mr. Hazard, I considered this important enough to get before you as soon as possible, because he was concerned about the timeline before the November elections. That's why I put it on the agenda. And when I put it on, I asked Cheryl, I said, make sure you mail it out. She said, do you want it to everyone? I said, everyone, it's, it's public information once it comes into this office. Everyone that's on the agenda, she gave it. Some people didn't get the agenda, as I understand. Did you get it? Because we've checked your emails and stuff out there. So anyhow, we're trying to work that problem out.
I'd just like to say, as one member of the select board, and I think I'm speaking for the rest of the select board, correct me if I'm wrong, we have full confidence in Dennis, in what he's been doing, what he will continue to do in the future. And if he says he can do the job, he will. And if he also says, he also can, I'll just, if for some reason it can't be done, we'll work something out, whether that's, what that is, is-
Yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined. But certainly, and I don't want to be speaking for you, but I'm hoping you agree. Okay? Thank you. Anyway, we have, we have the confidence in Dennis.
We gave him our blessing.
Thank you.
We gave him our blessing and he approached us first and asked if we were okay with him doing that. We had a, a conversation about it and we said yes.
And we said-
I'm curious, Dennis.
We said if things didn't work out, we'd be-
Yep.
It was a unanimous decision.
Yep.
I'm very curious, Dennis, how many hours a week do you put in?
Well, it's hard to say, because a lot of things that I do are after-hours, when you go to meetings that aren't necessarily town business, but you want to keep involved. But I would say I put in about sixty to seventy, maybe more hours a week, uh, on a routine basis, not on, uh-
Night, evening, noon?
Night, in the evening, daytime. I don't take lunch, I, on my lunch hour, I go in and, uh, I make deposits and then I do business in town. I might grab something on the, uh, on the way back to eat, I don't take breaks unless I go out to ask Cheryl and the staff. They don't consider those breaks, though. But, uh, no, I, I mean, I, I'm not crying, that's what I want to do. I mean, I have to keep myself busy.
I understand that, Dennis, I was just very curious. I, my own estimate in my head is how many hours you work a week is around sixty to sixty-five, from what I see and from what I know from our communication. So, that's a lot of hours.
Denny, do you have anything you wanna?
Is that, I mean, traditionally is a, is a position in the state that you consider a full-time job?
No.
No?
There are days, as, as I explained to you, uh, there are, the first couple of months of the legislature, in the first session, it's slow, it builds up. If you're, depending on the committee that you're on, some committees don't meet right away. It takes quite a while for bills to work through the process. So they're not working on those bills, so the sessions are short. As you get toward, uh, April, May, sessions pick up, intensity picks up. The benefit that I have that other town managers didn't have or don't have, is that I'm fifteen minutes away. And I do a lot of reading at night in the legislature, I was one of the people that read most of the stuff that came across. And so I, I believe in doing my work. So, yeah, but as you get towards the, as I explained to you when we were talking about whether I should run or not, uh, when we get toward that deadline, there may be a couple of weeks when it's really intense and you have to be there morning, evening, and night, and those were the times that I said that if we had to do something, and that I would have that money taken out of my pay or whatever.
The other, the other thing that was said is if there came a question in the office, something was going on, it needed the town manager, he's a phone call away.
Phone call away.
And he said the only time he probably could not answer the phone, if it was, if he was, uh, running, how'd you say it? Something about a bill, if he was presenting a bill.
Presenting a bill.
Something like that. That'd be the only time he could, but he would call back as soon as he got-
Because you could walk out the room, call back.
Can't ask much more, I guess.
Most of the legislators I know, they full-time go.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a, a question and a comment.
Hold on. We do want to start a policy, we just discussed this, that just because it's on a reporting as the official minutes, identify yourself by name before you-
Even though we know-
But not everyone does.
Jim Webster, uh, resident of Belgrade. Um, the, there were two things, I think, that, that I was concerned about. If you were a clerk in the state of Maine, you would have to give up your job to run for any office, to run for an office, not to serve in the office, to run for an office. So, I hope that if you get into the legislature, you'll remember that.
Well, I remember that.
When it comes time, well, you, you used to work for the state.
Right, and it says, work, the Ethics Commission tells me, we are not aware of any restriction in statute or source that would prevent a municipal employee from running for partisan office, such as the main, the House of Representatives. There is a statute forbidding employees in the executive branch of the state government from running in the executive branch, that's the clerk, running for partisan office, and that's section, uh, uh, main revised statutes annotated five, number five, seven oh five six A four. But no such law exists for municipal employees. As you described to me, your separate segregation of campaign activities from your job as town manager.
Yeah, and, and I'm not making any accusation or saying you shouldn't because of your position or anything else, I'm just saying, when I worked for the state, I actually was gonna run for that, for the same seat, uh, many years ago. And I was told that I could go out and get all my signatures that I wanted, but as soon as I handed them off, I had to have, I had to resign from my job as a clerk with the state.
Yeah, because that's the, that's because-
Twelve thousand dollars a year or something.
That's because there's a law against it.
I understand, I understand that, but I'm just saying, so, so I'm hoping, actually, you know, an idea for you, if you do become, um, a legislator, maybe you can, we can talk about the Hatch Act.
Well, the Hatch Act is a feather ball, right?
We're, we're under the main Hatch Act.
Right, and, and the Hatch, and then there's a main state subsidiary, and that's what gets that state in ways, it does not, uh, don't like municipal.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it does, but I'm just saying that there is a, there is a discrepancy there, in terms of fairness. The other question I have is, what would happen if, would you see, maybe I should address it to you, to the chair, I don't know, would there ever be legislation that would be beneficial to more than one town in your district and, and where your position in Belgrade would, would, um, give you preferential treatment for the town of Belgrade? In other words, because, so would something come up that, um, your position as a town manager in Belgrade would benefit Belgrade over another town in your district?
Well, I, I, I find that hard to believe that it would be true, because you remember, town officials, town managers are working for the people in their, in their, um, towns. And it's what benefits the people. I suppose you could theorize that there might be some, it might be a vote that perhaps would establish a, a corridor for something to happen specifically in Belgrade that no one else could take benefit of, but that's a specific issue. There, the only, the only restriction that I'm aware of is you can't be on the State Board of Assessors. But if that were to happen, I would, uh, basically accuse myself pursuant to the ethics requirements, that if you believe that there's a conflict, you personally believe there's a conflict, you should recuse yourself. And I would do that. And, and I would expect other people to do it.
And I don't doubt, I don't doubt you would, Denny, I don't, I just was curious, this is kind of a hypothetical question, would there be, having served in the legislature, are there times where legislation comes up that is preferential to a community?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Somebody else, you got a question?
I just wanted to-
Could you say your name and-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Linda Kohler, and I'm a resident of Belgrade.
Thank you.
Um, if he, if you were in session in the legislature and you are also a town manager, if there was a crisis here, is there a policy in place in Belgrade and he was not able to come at that point, or he had to leave that job, but was told that they needed him to be there in the legislature at the point, who makes that decision? Is there somebody in the town office who could then take over your role and have that decision-making ability and, you know, be able to solve this crisis, which could happen?
Right, it could happen, and what I would do is come back home, because the legislature would allow, though, you can get access to some legislature, it happens all the time.
So there is a should, but-
Hold on. Uh, but there is an approach where I can designate an employee of the town to act in my stead. And that's what I would do if I absolutely couldn't, for instance, if I was in a car accident. What would happen right now if I'm in a car accident? Board, I would ask the board, ultimately, I would ask the board to say, look, I'm gonna designate someone, so is that okay? I can designate a forty. So, that's probably what I would do.
And at, and at that point, that person who would take over the position would have the ability and the experience to handle the situation?
With the oversight of the select board, yes. Remember-
Would he be, or would, would they be compensated in the same way that you would be?
That, that's exactly what I said, I'd be willing, as I said, if there was a need to place someone in a position, in a situation where I couldn't make it back for whatever reason, then, then we would compensate that person. If that, if that need for compensation came about, I would have it taken out of my pay. So I think that that's covered, I don't know what you guys think. Obviously, town managers work on, just like the select board. The select board and the town manager operates under the ordinances and the, uh, requirements passed at town meeting. We operate under that, there's state law that we operate under too. The town manager beyond that operates under the policy-setting authority of the board. We, I can't move forward on certain issues unless it's been delegated to me or the board approves it. There are letters that come in that I can't sign unless the board says, well, you go ahead and sign it for the board. And there's a vote that's taken on that. So it's, it's not just a simple town manager, the town manager doesn't run everything, he keeps the general day-to-day activities under the guidance of the, the board and under the understanding of the state law and the ordinances passed at town, that he keeps things moving and operating and functioning for the town.
And just, just to speak to that, so, under, if that ever should happen, then you would, in, in essence, be taking a leave of absence and somebody else would fill it.
That's right.
I got one hand up over there, Jason.
My name is Jason Kier, I'm a resident here in Belgrade, and I just wanted to offer some positive assurance, that there are other representatives, Honorable James Gilway of Searsport also serves as town manager, and many, the opinion of many, is a very successful person. So that's all I wanted to offer.
Thank you. Uh, hang on. Let me get this gentleman, go ahead.
Fred Kohler, resident of Belgrade. I noticed in the town manager's, Denny's, uh, answer to, answers to, uh, Mr. Hazard's letter, that he did mention it's two jobs, the legislature and here. And we're asked to take his word for it, that he can do a complete job on both, but it's just, we have to take his word for it. What, what guarantees does the town have?
The board, we're keeping a close eye. And we will, I guarantee.
I just, it just seems like a conflict of interest to me.
Um, let me get, right, you want my, my, to answer, uh, this is Kohler's, uh, point, is that there's many times when, and he's on vacation or he has a day off or, you know, and we have a great staff in Cheryl and Melanie and the other fellows that are in the office that, you know, the office runs well, and we're aware that it runs well, and we're proud of the training that those staff have had. And, uh, and then to answer, I guess it's your husband's point, um, you know, when, when Denny agreed to take this job, uh, you know, we have, uh, expectations of him, uh, of the town manager's role, and, uh, we look at his experience, but we also have to take him at his word, that he'll fulfill those duties. And, uh, to this point, we've been, uh, very pleased, uh, and it's reflected in our, uh, job appraisal that we give him on a timely basis, I forget how often we do it.
Six months for the first year, and then every year after.
And, uh, and so even if, if that was the only job he was doing, you know, we, we have to monitor and take him at his word, in your words, to, uh, that he'll, you know, be able to do those duties. And I think, uh, you know, doing a side position like this is, isn't necessarily too much different than if Denny were, you know, very active as a scoutmaster and, uh, you know, boy scout troop, uh, as a lay leader in his old church, whatever it might be. I mean, it would require, uh, it could require a great deal amount of time if, if he wanted to devote that much time to, to those activities. And, and I see his, uh, involvement in, in the legislature as, you know, something akin to that, uh, and, uh, something that he kind of would be doing, you know, apart from this job, um, not too much different than if, if, uh, there's probably a number of people in this room that have had two jobs at one time, uh, to pay the bills or what have you. So, um, that's my opinion. I saw some other hands up there. Yes.
Um, it seems, oh, Kathy Brown.
Oh, yes, yes.
Uh, this has, uh, Mike, my points are only in relation to should Denny be elected to the legislature? And I would want the opinion of you on the select board. During vacations, days off, sick days, we don't expect to have to find him at the State House, we expect his attention to be primarily in the town. It seems to me, if this town can run with a part-time town manager, then why have we had a full-time town manager all these years? I don't want to get into debates about how many hours you work after hours, weekends, whatever. But I, I think that the job of a town manager is to be in the office or at the various locations, making sure things are done and done properly, to be available to residents when they call in. I think all of us residents are used to calling the town office between business hours and expect to be able to get an answer and talk to someone with the authority to clear things, then not have to wait for whatever else goes on. I just think that if we don't need a, a full-time town manager, then, then maybe that's fine, but I, I believe we do, and we shouldn't be having it be part-time for at least six months out of the year when the legislature's in session. It's all well and good to have your extra projects on the side, but, um, I, I would- It's all well and good to have your extra projects on the side, but I would think that being in the legislature could be extremely distracting to your regular work.
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
There's a lot of times when I'm out of the office at meetings and other activities that are related to the town, that people call, because they call my cell phone, or this phone, I carry both, and I call them right back. I don't think, if you survey the town, look at the phone calls that come in, and I get a number of phone calls come in, I don't think there are many people that'll say that they don't get calls back. Again, that's subject to the board's discretion and how they want to treat the positions.
Bernie Rice, resident of Belgrade. First off, sixty, seventy hours a week, that's what he commits to Belgrade, and then some, sixty, seventy hours a week. Now he's making a commitment to represent our community and several other communities at the state house, and that's gonna be many hours a week. And it just, the people in this town, I think the majority of the people in this town expect that we have a full-time town manager. And I would hope that we would be, as taxpayers or residents of this town, shown the respect that he would resign if he gets elected. I'm both for Denny. I'm a Republican, very conservative, and I don't question that he is definitely dedicated to the town of Belgrade. I know Denny very well. I don't argue that point. I just think that it's like you could be a workaholic, and that's all well and good, somewhere that catches up to you. One other point I want to make. Let me just get this straight. Denny's in Augusta and takes care of the town business on a part-time basis. When he's doing it, he's gonna be on a part-time basis? So, but we had to have a full-time librarian to manage an eighteen-hundred-square-foot library with two assistants, open thirty hours a week. We had to have that, or we can live with a part-time manager on and on with all the stuff that goes on in this town, which Denny, no question, is taking care of. And I say, him going to this legislature, he made the decision, and I would hope that he would step up like he did before and resign if he gets elected.
Denny?
Hey, I hear you, Ernie. And if I get elected, if that's what the board would prefer, that's what I'll do. I could do that tomorrow, so I could continue my campaign. So, I mean, it's all possible. The issue is, I think that in the position of town manager, I can do a full-time town manager job from the legislature. Other people have. Other officials in state government are working full-time jobs and do their legislative duties. So we can argue and debate the kind of philosophy around that. You have a good point of view, I hear it. I'm not just, but I'm, before I even said I was gonna run, because I committed to three to five years, you were on that board when I was selected, I committed to three to five years, I wouldn't have run if the board had said, "No, we don't think you should run." All right? Position I'm in now is that I've committed to the party that I would run. The party has no opportunity to get another candidate. I'm on the ballot, all right? So that's just the way it is. So right now, it's a conundrum, so to speak, for me. It's not a conundrum for the board. You'll get the services from me that you are getting now, that the town's getting now. I may not do the fifteen, twenty hours, or thirty hours extra a week that I do, but that was being done because that's what I would do if I, it's just what I do. So I might commit more time to the legislature, but that doesn't mean you're not getting full-time.
I just, I lost my train of thought just to respond to you, Denny, on this thing.
That's okay.
And I don't know if I can get it back, but, no. When you made the commitment to, when you was applying for the position, you made it perfectly clear that you would not be applying for the position if you were gonna run for the state.
Never said that. Never said that. Did I, anyone on the board?
Well, I recall you saying that if you, if you weren't gonna, since he was running, you weren't gonna run.
I don't want to get into it.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I just don't want to get into it.
I guess one last thing I'd like to say is, if this is something that the select board seems to want to support, then I think you need to have a full-time, a full, open discussion, so public hearing, and put it out to the town, put it into the paper so the people can show up and let them view their opinions on this. Since you represent the people, let's have them come and you present your case to the people of this town.
Thank you. Eric?
I don't want Denny to resign at all. I think over the last fourteen years, I've voted for every one of you at some point or not, the positions you've got. I have utmost, I have faith in the fact that you'll act in the best interest of the town. If Denny seems to be getting behind, I'm sure you'll go into an executive session to solve the problem, one way or the other. I'm sure if Denny feels that he's not doing both jobs well, that he'll make the right moves. So I, you know, I think you're doing just fine, to tell you the truth. I'd like to see Denny run and get elected and see how that works out, whether the town has benefits, and I think they will, by having a representative in Augusta. So my voting record is great, because you're all sitting up there. I'm happy about that. And I don't want Denny to resign. That's just what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything they'd like to add to this? Jack?
Jackson, Belgrade. Just a question. Will the board, is the board willing to respond to Bruce Hazard's letter where he asks that specific question?
I believe we will.
Thank you.
I forgot one thing. I put those signs in front of Bruce's house, and it wasn't on his lawn, it was down the road a little bit. I think he claims a little bit more lawn there than he really has. Were he here, I apologize. It's on the, it was in the riddle, yeah.
Anybody else got anything? Yep, go ahead.
How many hours, you were on the legislature before, like, how many hours did you dedicate to the legislature?
Well, because I wasn't working before, I did dedicate all my time to legislature. But I know people that were in the legislature in the same position that I was, that had full-time jobs.
Ma'am, what was your name, just for the record?
Jane.
Oh, Joy Emmons, resident of Belgrade. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're trying to get that right.
All right. Anybody else got anything to kind of beat this to depth, I think, now? I can assure you that if we see something that's not getting done right in this town of Belgrade, that this board will go into executive session with Denny and straighten it out. I can assure you that's gonna happen. Denny and I have had some major discussions, as you know, Ernie. I'm a little bashful, but once I speak out. But I would just assure you that, that if we think, see things aren't going the way they should be, we'll be having a chat. And thank you guys very much for coming tonight, and we will send something to Bruce. I'm disappointed he's not here, because if I'd had my way, we probably would not have done this tonight without him being here. I think when somebody writes something like this, they better be there to support it. It's my opinion. So we're gonna move on, I guess, to the next item on our agenda. Thank you guys again. Appreciate it. I guess we're up before the town as well. I guess what we're gonna do, how we're gonna address this, we're gonna do a, we won't let Denny send a...
I think we would say, these are official minutes, that we took the issue up at our meeting.
Yes.
So that'll be all reported.
But there is, you know, there's an official transcript of the conversation. The questions were asked in a public forum, and they were answered.
I think he said something, I think he was gonna be listening to it.
So I guess that's all we've really gotta do.
I appreciate them taking the time to bear their concerns.
Yep.
You know?
All right. Let's get into the town manager.
Just to let you know, on the streetlight committee, the committee's basically, we're at a position where I think we're going to, once I can define the cost, I'm getting, trying to get access to this, to request that we put up two pilot, pilot, two streetlights in and around the town someplace. We'll have to choose where. I think one would be in the village area, and one would be in the rural area, so that people can make a decision about whether they like the street lighting itself. I think that was the kind of concept about the streetlights. Remember, this is the effort where you, we would buy our streetlights, save the leasing cost, and some of the electricity costs, probably save up around seventy, seventy-five percent per year in cost on those. But that's one thing that we're working on. Did I fair on that?
Yeah, Kathy mentioned earlier that there's a concern about the accuracy of the
Location.
CMV list.
Yeah, we're trying to define that. So that's that, just to let you know that. Remember when we talked about possibly working with Rome on fire and protection of EMS issues?
Yes.
I met with Rome, and you'll prove the fact that I go and ask them about what they thought about forming a two-town committee to look at that issue. They're in agreement with that, and we'd have the fire chiefs on. I'm drafting with their select board person, Richard LeBout. I'm drafting up an ad hoc memorandum that talks about what that committee would do and what they would report back to both boards about. This is an effort to improve fire and EMS services because throughout the region, there are two towns.
Jack had a question, I think.
I may have missed the opportunity, but, Jackson, Belgrade. I may have missed the opportunity, but on the LED streetlights, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to do this pilot program, but also to sit back and look at all the streetlights that we have and some that we don't have, and see if we're reasonably up to date on what we do. One of the streetlights on the current list is North Belgrade Station. I wouldn't be surprised if it dates back to the time there was an active station at that location.
I think it's right at the corner of Station Road and Route Eleven.
No, this is down where the station is.
Down by the station, yeah. That's what he said, he told me.
Maybe it is. See, there's enough to put on your...
That's why we need to get the locations down. Exactly.
Thank you. Go ahead, keep going down.
Okay. As you know, we're working on our draft budget pursuant to the schedule. I got the road committee next week, we're hopefully gonna be looking at a draft article, and with some of the costs of that. I've got all of the special warrant requests in from the folks, we're working on warrant articles and costs of those. I'm hoping to preview the budget sometime in the first couple of weeks of October. When I say preview, no votes. We would have a meeting of the board and the budget committee together, and we'd go through it. There's a couple of things I'll be doing with the budget committee prior to that, like the wages. We have a committee that's looking at wages. We'll be reviewing that with the budget committee earlier, and then with the board. But all of that, there's no voting or anything, it's just looking at issues. So that's one of the things that I'm trying to work. The KV cog dinner for the annual dinner is on September twenty-seventh. I know Mike was gonna go to that. He can't go to that now, so if someone would like to go to that. I'll be there representing the town. December twenty-seventh, I mean, September twenty-seventh. I think it's five o'clock, but you can get there later if you want to.
You can get there at six. Way purple.
I'll just throw my sprinkles.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right.
I have a job. I have two jobs, that one and this one.
You've heard a lot about the dam committee and the Wings Mills Dam, the Long Pond being, I should say, probably some of the lowest levels we've seen. The dam committee is working on a plan to repair the dam. There's probably not a lot that can be done this fall in time to really stop what's going on now. The, they looked at a temporary fix and all that, that's gonna cost upwards of eight thousand dollars, but they're looking at a more permanent fix, and hopefully next spring they can put that forward. They're gonna come forward potentially with a fairly significant request to do a permanent repair on the Wings Mills Dam. I haven't, I don't know what that is yet, but I'm pretty sure that's gonna be pretty intense. But we've received a lot of concern expressed by neighbors and people on Long Pond about the lowered water levels. I go to those meetings just so I can answer those questions.
Jack's got a question.
Question from a budget standpoint and a warrant standpoint. If that's not gonna come until next spring, will that, will we, we've been in a position to do any work?
Well, they're looking at the warrant article, developing a warrant article with this request in it in time for our budget this fall. Okay, that's what they're working on right now.
Or as you say you want to do.
Yeah, they're gonna develop, because they've already got engineering studies done. Some of the cost estimates range pretty high, I don't want to say them right now. It's pretty scary, but...
Is Mount Vernon included in that?
Mount Vernon is certainly buddying a lot of Long Pond frontage and as, but Mount Vernon has never really joined the dams committee, the regional dams committee. There are three towns, there are several towns that could join, but only three towns took that on, and that's Sydney, I mean, not Sydney, Rome, Belgrade, and...
So we're going to see an increase in our, or a Mount Vernon dam?
It's not a Mount Vernon dam. We own all of the dams. We own the dam in Mount Vernon. We own that dam in Mount Vernon. That wasn't a decision that I made.
I know that.
That goes back a long time ago.
Yeah, I mean, is there, just to go on that, is there a reason why we couldn't go to Mount Vernon and say, you know, it's time to hear the stuff up and...
Well, I've actually raised the issue to some of the boards, this board of select persons over there. I attended one of their community meetings when they were talking about their comprehensive plan and talked a little bit about what we were doing. That was on a Saturday, I think it was. I did that and talked about their comprehensive plan and what we were doing, and they were asking questions. And I said it might be a good idea for Mount Vernon to join that, I think it'd be a good. But my understanding is that the board, on several occasions in the past, has approached Mount Vernon, and they've declined to participate in that regional dam. The good thing about all this regionalization stuff is maybe in the future they might be willing to join, as Sydney might be able, you know, all that. But remember, everyone's looking at their town. It's always, you know, Sydney's saying, "Well, I don't get the benefits of the dams that other people might," you know, so Mount Vernon's probably saying the same thing.
Saying they should pay half of it or anything like that.
Well, it's paid based on shore frontage.
Just as a point, they've got a ton of unupset citizens over there. This may be a great year to try to re-approach them. They are unhappy.
Tell me about it, I get a lot of calls.
You shouldn't get any calls.
I do, but because they think that the...
You live in Mount Vernon, yes.
They think Belgrade Town operates the dam. They're not familiar with the regional dam committee's construct, or structure.
Well, maybe you should do it.
I told them to call the dam committee, because their office can't do anything about it either.
Tell them to complain to the town office. That's what's gonna happen. I agree with that. The town office going to...
That sounds good.
I would look right back to the town office and tell me what the...
I have done that on occasion, but... LD six twenty-nine, I gave you a forwarded copy, that's the foreclosure process that changed at the end of the session. You'll be hearing more about that. This is the effort on part of the governor and the legislature to kind of offer some better protections during a foreclosure proceeding to older and less wealthy property owners. So you'll be hearing more about that as time goes on, we'll be getting more information about it, but the LD does require us to change our process toward foreclosure. One good thing about this is that we don't try to foreclose on property. We try to do what we can to get people the ability to pay. So MMA convention, I... So, MMA convention, I now have my answer to that. So, I'm gonna be out of the office tomorrow, I'm gonna be at a convention. It's not associated with town activities, but it is a convention where I was asked to make a presentation. So I'm gonna do that, I'm taking time off to do that and I paid for the convention fees myself. Just in case there's any concerns about that. But I'll be out of the office tomorrow and I'll be back on Friday attending the same meeting you were at.
Is that it? That's all you've got tonight?
Could've had more, but push it. You gotta tell your group.
All right. I guess we're down to the oven? Oh, hands come up now. Go ahead.
Gary, can you just one time say your name?
Yeah, my name's Gary Mahler, I live in Belgrade. I'm chair of the senior resources committee, ad hoc committee, I should say. We're not asking for anything particular from you tonight, but we wanna tell you that the committee's been talking about a senior center in the town of Belgrade. And a building that looks pretty good for it, we think, is the old town office. And we'd like to kind of move a hand a little bit on that. We'd like to get some, maybe some estimates of redoing that town office while you guys think about it, making no commitments whatsoever. But it's probably about the right size and it probably would work okay. So, I'd just like you to think about it a little bit and I'll probably come back and ask for an answer on whether we can go in and get some bids on redoing that space, so. And I know you're not having any luck selling that thing. Right now, I think fifty K might not get it.
We'll return down fifty-five.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So anyway, that's just what I want you to think about. I want you to go home tonight, put your pillow, your head on your pillow or think about how wonderful it would be if Belgrade had a senior center.
And what would you do in the senior center?
I'd go there.
Thank you.
What is it, I'm just curious?
You would do, what you'd do?
What is the vision?
It would be games, coffee, probably, it would be volunteer run, tours run out of it, things like that, that any other senior center has. It wouldn't be a senior day center, or daycare center. But just a senior center. No, there's already a group that meets every Tuesday at the Center for All Seasons. They have coffee down there. And I think that would expand, I think, I don't know. The other thing that we've got to do, our committee's got to do, is run a survey. And in the survey, we're gonna ask, if we had a senior center, would you use it? And if only two people would, you know, that's probably not a selling point. Three maybe, but two's kinda light, so.
You've got one ahead of you.
Mary?
Okay. And just to follow up on Gary's, Mary Gold, by the way, Gary's information about the senior center, it'd be also for assistance for seniors, a place that they could go on to learn different technology skills and things like that and assistance in helping with their bills and helping them take care of business. A lot of seniors and older people have difficulty in that.
A resource center.
Kind of a resource center, right? Not just a place to go for, you know, for gathering, but a place to be helpful as well. So, I just wanted to make a request that there have been problems with receiving the agendas and the board packets, information. Is there any reason that, I know a couple of times I went to the town website thinking I'm gonna find the agenda there because I'm not home and I couldn't get it, because it didn't get sent out to that day. Is there any reason it can't be uploaded to the town website on that Friday?
It's supposed to be.
It's, they're not, they're not on there though, so. So if the packets could be uploaded to that site, I have a place that I could go, that I know that I could receive the information. So.
I tried to forward it once to Howard and I couldn't even forward it, I don't know why.
We looked at it today and it shows that it's sending it to Mary, it shows it's sending it to Howard, but we don't know where it's going because it's, obviously they're not getting it and I'm like
I got the agenda the next day after we talked.
I think it's because
It did not come that same day.
Right, there's such a large group in there of people that it's going to and it's Howard's going out over the internet. You've got to send it out in a different way, you can't send it out to that many email people. A lot of people's
That list is not too big, Mary.
It was, well, I only got half of
Well, I hear you.
one packet. So I'm just saying, essential location is the town website. We're talking about communications committee and providing information, so we could provide it to all of it we've posted there. So that's mine, that's just a recommendation.
That request has been made and I was under the understanding it was being uploaded as soon as it went out. So I'll have to fix that problem because that's my intention.
Can
I appreciate that.
Can the packet go on too?
That's what I'm talking about, the whole thing. That's what we, that's what I expect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You decided you wanted to keep his nose shut.
Okay, is he, oh, so I
So it's up to you.
I just wanted to make, make a comment about the senior committee. It's a, this is, this whole effort, and I know Gary knows this better than I do, it's about helping our seniors age in place, keeping them around as long. One of the big problems with seniors, there's a lot of, as a senior, I can say this. There's, there's a lot of need for socialization. And the socialization is part of what the resource center would do in fact if we were to have it. Because seniors don't get out and socialize and they need to, so.
As your little heads hit your pillows, remember.
Always with she.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, anybody else got anything they'd like to add tonight?
Go ahead. Just to build on the whole communications thing, I apologize for my tardiness this evening. But I was not, for some reason, I wasn't aware that we're having to public hearings at six o'clock. And part of that, let me, let me explain, is that I talked to Cheryl a little bit about this and I need to continue to work on it. That the emails that I receive, I can't open the packet. I mean, and everything that Anthony would send to me or that Melanie sends to me, I've got no problem opening. Now, it could be, as you mentioned, that it's my operating system or something like that. But I have absolutely no problem opening my warrants that Melanie sends out. I've got no problems opening what Anthony sends me. I can't, and so, like for this meeting, I, I was hoping to have time to stop in here and get a peek or something to see because I couldn't read it on my computer.
Okay, so.
And then at, just back a couple, at our last board meeting, there was a mention of this
I didn't.
This public hearing, so for
That should've happened.
In my case, I opened the meeting at six thirty.
Well, and I also thought, expounded on that today, that because there was the change, I get my book, I, you know, I take it home and I look at it and, but I honestly sort of like skim through it first and then I go back and look at it and it wasn't until the second go-through and it wasn't big letters, so it wasn't, because she put it in tiny print that it said six o'clock. But I think that it would behoove us to, if we're, if we do something like that, send a text out to everybody who's on the board that says like
That's a fair comment, that's a fair comment.
And our last meeting, that should've been, I think, really
I should've updated you, but we didn't get the GA thing in until the fourth, I can't remember when it came in, it came in after the last meeting, I believe. But that's a fair comment.
Howard.
Are we paying somebody to support our email system now?
Yeah.
I can't understand why this is taking so long to get resolved. When you first converted over, there was an issue of attachments. Talk with whoever it is that's running your system. The format that Ernie's talking about is the fact that you're using a proprietary product and not putting it into a universal format. PDFs, you'll be able to open.
I thought they
Sometimes they come through as PDFs, sometimes they don't. Sometimes there are two, two mailings that come out. It's not rocket science, folks. This is basic, fundamental, old technology. It's email. Please, get ahold of whoever it is that you're paying to do some training and or clarify how you can send things out so that they can be picked up on multiple devices. You shouldn't have to be trying to figure out what Ernie's operating system is versus my operating system versus whoever. It doesn't make any difference.
PDF files is how these things are supposed to be sent out. If they're not being sent out as PDF files, that's a problem.
Find out why the system is not doing that and get people so that they are aware of what it's gonna take to make it work.
In defense of everybody, I have no problem. It comes in and I get it and I always have a, because we're having problems, they'll send me a message saying you got this, and I do. I knew it was at six o'clock and then we had two public hearings. I don't know why, I don't know why.
No, I didn't do it either.
Well, I, we'll work on the problems, that's all I can promise.
I do generally feel like too, if we have a public hearing, that the people that are part of that public hearing should also be here.
They were gonna, I mean, the general, the general system.
Well, I feel like if you would like for us to approve your reapplication, then you should come.
Mary?
Just a point, the sign wasn't on saying there was a public hearing either out here, so.
We addressed, we addressed that earlier. The problem is, if you weren't here, that's definitely the problem. The problem is we're having internet problems from spectrum. Our internet is fluctuating up and down, like out. We try to get spectrum here, but we can't get here until Thursday. So, that's the problem. I was having my phone drop out, you know, my, because of the system. And I was having my computer go up and down, you know, the internet, it was difficult.
Now, are we, you know, we've got a contractor spectrum. I would like, hope that we're keeping track of all of these times because there really should be. If we're paying for thirty days, but we're getting twenty-five days of service.
We get sporadic service, we're getting poor quality services.
Well, we're not paying for poor quality service.
No, I understand that.
We're paying a good, paying good money.
Is there anything else anybody would like to say? Seeing none, actually in a shame, a motion to adjourn. A move and seconded? Paul and Bill?
I also think
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be back Friday, but I got meetings. Yeah, so I can meet with this, we can talk about it Friday afternoon. Because really, I was hoping that around December we'd be having, you know, I So, we can, we can have, or we can have a group. I can have people come in and, I know you were having
What's your meeting?
Yeah.
So it'd be
I could be over here at one o'clock. One o'clock, just kind of map out a strategy.
Let me put that down. Actually, actually, I went to the table. Somebody told me that. Yeah, that's, but it's just bothering people living on that place. Yeah, well, that's why I'd like to get somebody to go in. If it's higher than this, I make all these other problems. Yeah, yeah. Well, it just seems to me that the
No, I see that. That is a trip hazard. Once you were in the Navy, you'd never let that happen.
Uh, we're gonna try, we're gonna try to get a sound gotta do a survey. So, Artis got Well, I think it would, we'd like to get it as well together.
Well, you know, women are a lot of Well, maybe they're always still too point that has kids still
I guess I did ask. Yeah, thanks.
You know, one of the things that was helpful was
Not to quote her.
Little heads hit your pillows.
Now you're gonna tell me twice.
Yes.
How you been? Good, you?
Thanks, Jay. Take care.
You know James?
I know Jim.
Your name, yeah?
Thank you, James.
Are we? We're one of these
There's other people.
I think if they can find leadership, it's good. Moving by leadership. Yeah, what you mean.
I would put the sign up, that's lovely. I mean, Melanie will get them.
Hey, hey, is this on? Has it still recording yet?
It's not recording, I shut it off.